Alright, so we'll call the meeting to order. And if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gregory Hilton?
Here.
Sean Reed?
Here.
Kathryn Flott?
Here.
Michael DeWolff?
Here.
Kathryn?
Next up is Commission Secretary's Report on Posting of the Agenda.
Tonight's agenda was posted on May 24th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you. Sarah Melneal Items, we have none tonight. And do you want to talk a little bit about Anthony Ficello? Yeah, just do it right now, because that's the whole reason why we did not have an award for this month, is it was all dedicated to Anthony.
Yes, so I gave the Giroy, uh, Giroy Commission yearly award, year award, Person of the Year. But he actually presented, uh, marriage, presented his own, uh, actually pretty cool. Also to reiterate this one, this Friday, 5:31 at 8:31. At 7:30, the reception team, if you could be at Solosano Middle School, buddy or nobody, doesn't matter. If you can be there, please support that. First, uh, by all channels.
Nice. Presentations of the Commission, this is a moment for public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Seeing none. Next up will be the Valley Transportation Authority Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee G-PAC report from Carolyn. Come on up.
Okay, I don't know if my report meeting didn't get posted.
It did.
Yeah, okay, great. So, uh, the only thing I have to add is just a little bit more detail on Measure B Capital Project Criteria. Oh, there, now I'm just running. So the only thing I have to add is a little bit more on the 2016 Measure B Capital Project Criteria that I didn't include. And that, that is that after a couple of projects, there will be a scoring committee that's established, and that will be comprised of three members of the Technical Advisory Committee, three members of G-PAC, and one each day. And so there will be a lot of input there. Any questions?
How was that, the Copenhagen presentation?
I found it really interesting, yeah. Both in that it's a very bike-friendly and bike- friendly city, in which they deal with that incorporated into their daily lives. And also the ways they're making it more walking-friendly and bike-friendly is just to get people out and make sense on an innovative way. And so, as I said in the report that I gave us, the presentation is interesting and meaningful. I would recommend it.
Is that something that you guys would like to see?
I think we're just reading over any of these, uh, race barriers and barriers and those ways that create that design.
Yeah, he's right, what we're trying to do.
Yeah, community members, some pretty non-standard groups, too.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Carolyn? Alright, well, thank you for the report, appreciate it. Any members from the public that wish to comment? Alright. Next up is the, excuse me, the Consent Calendar. Just need a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, please.
So, this is where, isn't the meeting, it's just on small corrections, I'm no longer the voice chair. I'm not the voice chair unless Sean Reed has a, like, support.
So, we can do that, we can do a motion for all three, and then on the side, if anybody has any comments like that, we can just make a note of it, and then Sheila can, uh, will approve it, and then she could just make a little adjustment, that's it. Did anybody have anything else that they noticed? Okay.
So, I think I moved into...
Yeah, so you just make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar with the...
A motion to approve, uh, Consent Calendar with Consent Calendar, oh, sorry. They're rough, perhaps. Uh, with, uh, just that, you know, that Sean Reed is the voice chair.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Alright, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good. Next up, Item 8A, General Plan Advisory Committee G-PAC Update, Commissioner Reader.
So, right now, where there's no further, uh, uh, summary for those last meetings, then there's no more, uh, foreseeable future anymore meetings. Other than what happened, whatever.
Okay, sounds good. Any members of the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Next up is Old Business, Item 8B, Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award Nomination. So, this is a chance, uh, you know, before the school year obviously ends in a couple of weeks, if we're thinking about, like, someone from the school district or such, but this is a point where we can accept any nomination for our monthly award for the June meeting. I just want to make a quick little note that, um, that we also maybe even consider canceling the July one, so if there's somebody, if we're interested in getting somebody now, don't wait until that one. We did that last year, but we'll talk about that separately. So, does anybody have a nomination? Anybody think of? What do you think, Sean? I know we had talked about a couple of different people that, with the grant ending.
Right, uh, I would say the person that probably deserves some recognition that we may not be seeing after June as much as Ann Jasper from Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition. She's been the person for, um, that organization who is coordinating the bike rodeos and the Family Fun Bike Nights, and sometimes helping with bike trains for the last three years or more. So, I would nominate her.
I agree. I think it's a good opportunity, and, you know, she works with Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, too, so that's a good opportunity to recognize her and that organization, sort of a thank you to... Okay?
I agree.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that'd be Ann Jasper for the, um, June, June Monthly Award. Any members from the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Next up is the Safe Race to School Update, Commissioner Reed.
Okay, first, um, I believe I mentioned this, uh, before, but I'll go into a few more details and see if anybody else is interested, and, you know, if they're available to help with this at all. Um, there's going to be a Community Service Orientation Day on Thursday, June 13th, from 9:00 to 1:30 at Gilroy Gardens. But, uh, the reason I'm bringing that up here is that this will be an opportunity for us to get student volunteers trained and interested in helping Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Public Health is also going to be there, and we can train them or get them excited about helping with things like public fittings, swag on school buses, bike rodeos, uh, things like that. So, I'm planning to attend, I believe the part where students are being trained is only from about 9:00 to 11:00. And I'll have a chance to sign up for some opportunities this summer, so I might, you know, bring some notes of some events that I'll mention in a minute that we'll be working on, that they could possibly come help out if they want to. So, just let me know if anybody thinks they can, if they're interested in helping, you'd be welcome. We have a flyer in the back of the packet for Party in the Park. That's going to be June 21st from 5:00 to 9:30 at San Ysidro Park. We are planning to do public fittings, we're gonna have a G-PAC group to do public fittings, give out maps and other swag. Mr. Hilton's planning on coming, I will be there, anybody else is welcome to come and help out as well. Uh, I've been coordinating with Public Health and the San Ysidro, uh, Nuava Vida, community organization, and City Rec Staff, and the County Information Officer that works there, to get community members trained in leading a walking groups to that park, especially when they have big events like this. So, they'll be, we're gonna be training them and organizing a walk from over by South Line Middle School to the park for that event. Uh, when they get the bike trail, they'll plan on possibly doing some bike events there as well. I did arrange for two bikes to be donated, that had been a part of a raffle that they have to get community feedback. They raffle up items, and I was able to get two bikes. That was nice. Uh, next, let's see. Also in the packet, we have the Turning Wheels event at the Gilroy Library. Gilroy G-PAC is going to be involved with that, and that's from 11:00 to 2:00 on June 22nd. And I'm going to be there, anybody else is welcome. Uh, we're going to be leading bike safety courses, and Gilroy PD is gonna be there also with their Bike Indescript and Safety Village, and two traffic officers, and possibly some VIPs, policing, some policing volunteers to help us leave that public health. We'll be providing helmets and making sure that the helmets get fitted properly. My other update is about the Safe Race to School Stakeholders Meeting, and I was related to that. Uh, we had that meeting April 24th. And some updates from that meeting. Uh, Public Health mentioned some reasons why the ATP grant, possibly why a few points were lost on that that could have made a difference, and possibly that getting that grant to be serving Gilroy. Lack of a Vision Zero Plan has been mentioned before as something that can earn a point, can help with that grant, and possibly others. Updating the bike plan and pedestrian plan for Gilroy, and making sure we actually have possibly a bike plan and a pedestrian plan, they're two separate things. I believe we talked about, uh, you know, I think Gary's mentioned he's interested in things like that if he can find funding to, you know, make it happen at some point. She also mentioned, uh, Alisa Campbell from Public Health mentioned that it might be of some value to try to work on a joint resolution between the city and the school district on a Safe Race to School Resolution. But both organizations do have a Safe Race to School Resolution already, they just don't have a tree. There have been some meetings in the past about Elliott having a walking school bus, especially with Alexander Station opening. Cheryl Galloway from the school district is working to meet with the Alexander Station community members and to possibly get a school bus going, she's currently working on that. Specialized riding for Focus was discussed, and we got positive news on that that all that chat remind us about in a second. The, we've been working to get the students to be able to ride off-campus at times, and we finally have success with that. Want to say something about that?
Yeah, I didn't reiterate it earlier. It's, uh, this Friday, 5:31, maybe 31st, if you're around, please come to Solosano. You only have a bike, you can just come there and help, get across the street. This is just show of support, this is gonna be huge, because, uh, the governor Flores is behind this as well. Uh, I believe, uh, City Council member Fred Cohar had mentioned he was gonna try to come, so I'm thinking of getting, trying to have him come. Um, and Jolene, her last name, who's a school board member, is gonna try to come as well. So, I think you're really good to have the kids to ride a bike, especially with Solosano much right there. So, access to a lot of trails. So, I think this is a great program for the kids and youth of San Ysidro.
The maps that Public Health has been working to get, made for each school, showing safe walking and biking routes, have been moving along. And I just saw an email from Neron today, providing some final details on some areas that we noticed needed to be updated on the maps before they get printed. And the goal is to get those out at the beginning of next school year. Uh, the other update, there's an item in the packet that has a chart that says Gilroy's Safe Race to School Core Activities. Uh, this one will take me a minute to discuss, if you guys could turn there, follow along with me. So, this is where things currently stand moving forward with the grant ending. That's been, you know, there was a couple million dollar grant, ATP grant, that was allowing Public Health to support Safe Race to School, getting built in Gilroy, and all the different activities happening. This is a list of the items that currently seem like they have a way that they're gonna continue moving forward, and others that is kind of blank, where we need to figure out how we might be able to keep some of these things happening. So, if we go to the bottom, we see Engineering. Engineering's been doing a lot to improve infrastructure, and they've made a funding request to be able to have some funding available to continue providing infrastructure improvements around the schools. Enforcement will continue with Gilroy Police Department and the rotation that they use for that. And if you reach out to them for certain events, they try to come and support them. I did that for Rod Kelly's Bike Rodeo last week, and officers came and made sure there was enforcement around watching, with extra bikes around the campus, that, you know, people were driving safely and watching out for them. They actually came and watched, one of them stayed for most of the bike rodeo, so that they could kind of see ways that when they hold bike rodeos themselves or come to bike those, they have some experience with how that kind of bike education works, and, you know, getting ideas on how they might improve what they do. Moving up to the top, though, Education piece is where there's really gonna be some things lacking in the short term, possibly. So, Gilroy has eight elementary schools, three middle schools, two large high schools, two small high schools. During this grant period, there's been bike rodeos happening at the elementary schools, Family Fun Bike Nights, in-class education, there's been some student leadership training happening at one of the high schools. And none of that currently has something declared to make sure that that's continuing to happen. And it was moving towards possibly, moving towards where we had those kind of things, possibly building towards happening at all of the schools. We do have, with the specialized grant, Solosano is going to be having kind of a model program continuing to go on. Unfortunately, the other two middle schools did not succeed in getting that grant this year, but they're, uh, to apply next year. There continues to be a way to get helmets, as long as there's somebody to provide, you know, fitting for people. And Public Health can continue to do workshops to train parents, but they can't really come and provide incentives or come and run events for us anymore. The Walk and Bike to School Days, and Walk and School Buses and Bike Trains will be totally up to parents and school staff at this point. Unless something else is figured out. So, I just wanted to write that update and have that in mind as we move forward, finding out further details, maybe this summer, about the Measure B E and E funds, looking at how we can provide some of these services in the future. Any comments or questions? That's all I have on Safe Race to School.
Did we, did you mention how the PD was offering their, their equipment if we needed it?
Yeah, yeah, so they'll have the Turning Wheels, and they've made it an offer that we can possibly use that at other times. But they've noticed and that some of the things that Public Health has and that Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition's been using probably weren't just fine or a lot simpler to set up. But I'll have a chance to see it in person next month, and see what I think. But Public Health, uh, thank you for bringing that up, because Public Health does have a kit that they would like to have us, or have available for us to use, but we don't currently have anyone declaring that they want to store the kit. So, it's currently one of the, the Public Health people's house.
Like a lot of our, a lot of the stuff in our garages. Um, I know the police department gave a, did the bike rodeo with their stuff at, for Wheelers Preschool the other day. They did a little, they had the kids on Strider bikes and stuff, so that's, that's pretty cool. Okay. Anybody else have anything to add?
Only the both of Neron and I did attend that event, and it was fun to watch.
Oh, the Wheeler?
Yeah.
Yeah, nice going. Cool, right on. Okay, um, any members in the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Thank you, Sean. Next up is the website update. I'll let Gary, Gary keep kick it off.
So, um, we met with Commissioner Flott not too long ago, and I think we're on the same page in terms of where we want to go with that. We'll talk a little bit about that, but I also want to indicate that we've come up with, I think, a process, we talked about it at the last meeting, where I think we want to be pretty clear that we're willing to update stuff on a regular basis, and that the turnaround time doesn't need to be three months. In fact, what you'll see this evening is that Nuon's updated everything we talked about already. So, um, just to be clear, the things that we talked about at this meeting and are voted on by this commission at this meeting can't go up on the website soon after this meeting. So, we've talked that Commissioner Flott will be preparing information, sending it to Neron, and then Neron can go ahead and update that within a week or so of getting that information from you. Stuff new that you guys all want to have on the update or on the website needs to come to the agenda to be voted on, to be put onto the website, and then to be, go through, Mr. Flott, and then be put on the website. So, nothing can go on the website without first coming from the commission. So, it can go on the, on the website, once it's been here, one way or another, either after or, you know, directly through. So, that's kind of where we're at. So, um, Neron, do you want to just go through and identify what you've made, the changes you've made, and kind of summarize maybe the meeting that we had with Commissioner, and some of the changes you've made?
Captain, Commissioners?
Aye.
I'm popular demand, I'm back.
And I will say it's by popular demand, because we're very happy that Neron is here, and Neron has the skills to be able to do this.
Thank you, Neron.
So, um, I found that Commissioner Flott looked like he did a fantastic job giving me really a visual format to go off. And in the future, if you guys would like to make changes to the website, I think, you know, those visuals, um, representation really helped me a lot. He actually copied this website, made it into his own HTML file, and he said, "Well, this is kind of what I really want people to look at." And we had a meeting, talked about it, and I had exactly what he wanted to have. So, the first changes we'd like to have, uh, we'd like to have is to actually have Bicycle Pedestrian Commissioners email. So, the public will now go onto a website, it says right up, up top, get everything on. If you click on this, it'll copy the emails directly, and that will be forwarded to all Commissioners. So, I'll find you guys will receive that email.
Now, there's a very critical rule that goes along with that, and that's a Brown Act rule. And what that basically says is that if you guys go ahead and get something through that email, you cannot reply all when you respond to that.
Understood.
That is very important. You have to, if you're gonna respond, you have to respond individually.
Got it.
You cannot reply all if it goes there.
Okay.
If we start having issues with that, we've got to make some changes.
Okay.
And the second item is the agenda meetings. We want to make sure that it's readily available. Before, when you click on these agenda meetings, it's a raw agenda, it has other council meetings. Now, when you click on this button, it just takes you to Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Agenda.
Thanks.
Each one of these will have a drop-down menu for your meeting minutes or agenda, and everything that was discussed here.
So, we've made this a lot more direct, instead of having to go to...
The steps.
The steps to get there.
Thank you.
Yeah. And second is, you would like to have your strategic plans. So, unfortunately, I'm not aware if we have a 2019.
We do. It was approved in February.
So, with that, let me take a look into it, and we'll go ahead and update that to the 2019 strategic plans. It's not going to take also after this meeting. You know, I can help you send all that file for the 2019, and I'll go ahead and update that on the website.
Yeah, I'll, I can email it to you, or I'll let Patrick email it to you, he has it.
Perfect, that sounds good, so I'll go ahead and update that.
Looks great.
And second is the calendar. It's very important, because what we've been talking about is updating that calendar on the iThing side, and keeping that posting, like, the event flyer and stuff. So, I don't think this will be applicable anymore, so I will be taking that out. Um, this calendar will be live, so the nice thing about this calendar is I can add events on here. But the thing is, we can take, submit from you guys directly. So, as I would recommend, that begins from, you know, web discussions and with Commissioner Flott, so you can submit a, an event. So, any events that Bicycle Pedestrian related, you can go ahead and go on to our calendar and submit. So, I'll just show you how that works. For example, this one right here, I just added, this is the Bike Repair Clinic, it's the ones that, that Commissioner Sean just mentioned earlier. I just kind of put this in as a trail, and this is what it looks like when you input it into the calendar. And it will be live until that event is finished, and it will automatically drop off on the calendar. So, how you would do it, input the calendar, you can, so on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission website, the page itself, right, you can just scroll down to the calendar. You can click on any of the events, right? Usually you will have on the right-hand side, it's just to view them. From that, you can submit any events, or any event related to Bicycle Pedestrian, you can go ahead and click that, and this is actually open to any member of the public. You don't have to be registered under our website, we have a system username or anything. You can submit this. What, what it does is, if a lot of you submit an event, and come into staff, we'll review those events, make sure that it is part of the city sponsor, it's non-profit, and it's actually related to each of the Commissioners, and get that on the calendar. So, it's very simple, you know, very intuitive to use. You just select the type of Commissioners you want to have that on, the title of the event, date and time, location. If you don't have the name, over here, you can just type in any name. Like I did, Gilroy Labber, right, it's very simple. And then you can put the event address. This is very nice, because it let the public, there's a link that they can click on there, it can open up Google Map, Bing, or any other map update that you want to use, and they'll be able to find the application itself. You can include cost, there's admissions to go with, a lot of time it will be free, right? You can put free on there. Or the description of the events, of what it's about, it's limited to about 10, 20 thousand, right? And you can include pictures, so any J-PAC PNG file can be dragged and dropped right on there. And if the event has a link, you can include it on here as well, and, you know, wanted events can approve. Everyone will have that set. So, with this, you know, I'm trying to look at it, because a lot of time when you submit an event, unfortunately, its website is not giving notification. So, Friday at around 4:00, 5:00, so I'll walk in and take a look at any events coming from the G-PAC, and I'll review with them. So, if you guys have...
So, when you identify the G-PAC, anytime there's a calendar event, that goes typically to Rochelle. So, we've set it up now, so if there's a G-PAC event, it doesn't go through Rochelle, it goes specifically to Neron. So, Neron is gonna be the keeper of the G-PAC calendar.
Got it.
So, it will go specifically to you.
And it would be extremely helpful if, let's say, you guys submit any events, right? You can send me a heads-up email, and that would help me go through it quicker. And, uh, because right now, on the calendar, when I log in, I'll see all the other calendars.
Okay, so make it stand out with an email.
So, to make it stand out, you can just send me an email, if I don't even want to just submit it, the event is the name of the event, that will help me go through that event.
So, without that heads-up email, you have to literally go searching into the calendar to see if there's an event.
Exactly.
So, yeah, so if you guys do want to add something, send them a quick heads-up email.
Sounds good.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
So, and that, that's really where the, to the Bike Care Clinic, you know, that's what this looks like, you know, and there's a website with a link as well that takes you directly to the Turning Wheels for Kids. So, it's going straight to the website. So, this event actually has not been fully approved by a special event permit yet, but it is going through the channel. I just proved it this morning, so.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's working its way around right now.
See an official permit coming out in the next few days. But they've already posted on their website, so it's Gilroy Library from 11:00, too.
But that's important to know, so just because you're sending stuff to Neron to post, a lot of these items do need special event permits, and so they won't get posted on the calendar until the city does approve that special event permit. So, that's important to know.
Interested.
Yeah, that's fine. I like this process. This looks amazing. Thanks very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, thank you.
The one key thing that you see on here is an old outdated picture. The end of the agenda tonight.
Oh, yes, she took it.
We took it.
Looks good. Bye.
We posted a new picture.
Well, in turn, they get that updated by tomorrow. As soon as they make the pictures, I'll have that.
She has it. We just put it, we put Carolyn to, to my right and just took Gary's plate out just to, so we can all be together.
I can't thank you enough. You've done a good job.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Any members in the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Uh, next up is the CIP budget update on bike related projects. Um, staff report by Gary Heep.
So at the last meeting, I provided you an update on all the things that went through in the budget in turn, including, uh, safe routes to school money that we got approved again to preliminarily got approved. There's two votes that goes, but we got, uh, some, some money for safe routes to school, um, funding for some striping. We got a, a curb ramp, uh, funding for a project, uh, project for miscellaneous curb ramps through the city. Um, we got traffic calming improvements funded. We got funding for a rectangular rapid flash beacon and a pedestrian safety improvement at 10th and Orchard across from the high school. Um,
So that they, sorry, that they are approved?
Did get approved. Um, we got approval for funding for citywide regulatory sign replacements. Um, Neuron's going to be a very busy guy this next year because we're adding all this to his workload.
We're here to support you.
Whatever you want. We got approval for funding to do a citywide sidewalk condition assessment. So we're going to be able to hire a consultant to do a citywide, uh, evaluation of all the sidewalks throughout the city. So we'll then be able to go back to the council and say, this is how bad it is. This is the money we need to really make it a wonderful community. Um, so we talked about all that last month. So again, this is going to be voted on, um, with the final budget coming up in the next meeting or so. But what you guys asked me to do this meeting, and I believe what this item is, is the other, uh, projects that the commission asked, uh, specifically when Bryce came to this commission back at the beginning of the process and said, hey, guys, what is this commission want in terms of projects? Yeah, the commission would like to submit for the budget. So there were, um, two, three, four, five, six specific projects that the commission, um, submitted. Wayfinding signage for Christmas Hill Park, bike racks for downtown Gilroy, a bike pedestrian coordinator position, um, design and build bike pedestrian bridge from the top of Hector Pass, uh, class one bike head trail to Gilroy Gardens, illuminate the levee trail, uh, and training budget for the commission. So I'm here to report this evening, uh, with regards to what just recently got, uh, approved again, uh, or what the status of those were with the last, um, uh, May 20th council meeting. As you would guess, some of the bigger ticket items, the bigger projects, uh, did not get approved this time around, um, simply because we didn't have a real clear defined project. And I think, um, there's real interest from the council to, to get more definition on a lot of the projects and what they really are. You know, this year, we have, we have a two-year budget cycle. This year was the operating budget. Next year's going to be the capital budget. And a lot of the things you guys really asked for are capital projects. So what we need to really do is, is work with you guys over the next year and really better define what these capital projects really are and, and to really understand what they are and put numbers to them. So for instance, you guys asked for wayfinding signage at Christmas Hill Park. Um, then you had estimated, uh, a request for $6,000 where, well, we don't know where you want those signs, what that signage project actually really entails. We don't know if really 6,000 is, is an adequate number. So what we need to do is, is really, you guys can understand what that project needs to be, where the signage, signage needs to go. And then, you know, we'll just add that to Neuron's next signage project for wayfinding signage. Cause he likes wayfinding sign projects. From what I've understood, this is really good. Um, so bike racks in downtown Gilroy.
He shook his head.
That's what he finds. So bike racks for downtown Gilroy. Um, I, I think, um, you know, that again was something that was not approved. What we need to do is understand really how many bike racks we're going to continue to go with in term, in downtown. Um, we do have a bike fund right now. Um, there is a donation that we've been collecting for bike racks. Maybe we look at using that fund for bike racks. Um, I know it's intended for decorative bike racks. Maybe we use some of that for non-decorative bike racks. And really talk to you about where you want to go with the bike rack program downtown. I know there's not really, uh, we, we might already have enough decorative bike racks. Maybe we start populating the downtown with
The U-racks.
Inverted U-racks. So again, defining that a little bit better moving forward with that. Bike head coordinator, I think we'll hear more information about that when the BTA comes in June, comes to us in June. We're going to get a presentation. Uh, I think we're going to schedule about between 30 and 45 minutes to hear from, um, Lauren Ledbetter and her staff from the BTA and hear more about Measure B and the associated programs with that and how there might be funding for, maybe not the full for the bike and pedestrian coordinator position, but certainly encouragement programs. So, so that, let's put a hold on that one for now.
Have you ever seen that? Like someone could ju- not be a full-on bike head coordinator, but maybe just, we need you to organize the education encouragement, like be really specific. Have you ever seen that in another agency?
What we need to look to, and I, and I had a conversation with Lauren, I think what we need to do is really identify what we would like to do in terms of encouragement programs.
Okay.
And use that money not to necessarily fund a position to do that work. Because there's, the money's there to fund a position. Um, but really I think the money might be better spent funding work and funding encouragement activities as opposed to funding a person to do those activities. So, so I think working with you guys to understand what those needs are might be a better, better way to spend that money. And again, hearing from Lauren and her staff, uh, might help us better define some of that. Um, design and build a bike pedestrian bridge, um, for that class one trail, it go, from the class one track to Gilroy Gardens. That's again, something we're really going to need to put some numbers on, uh, some, just some thinking about and really figure out how much that's going to cost and put that in as a CIP project for the, um, for the budget. Similar with the next one, eliminate the levee trail, uh, request between the sports park and the new Hector Pass trail. Um, again, there's no estimate provided here. That could be a significant project, especially if we're looking at trenching, putting in utilities. Um, you know, you're looking at pedestrian scale lighting or you're looking at overhead lighting. Obviously you want to go with LED lighting. So there's a lot of questions about how we define that and that's, that could be a significant amount of money. I can tell you that IMF, which was the training budget, the commission did request to increase the training budget for next year from 1,000 to 2,000, that actually was a room. So you guys do have $2,000 for your training budget for next year. So I know there is an item on the agenda, I believe, for this evening to talk about, um, training for next year.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it right now. Actually, I can get the list.
So just let me wrap up this.
Okay.
This item. Uh, so that was the last of the items that you had asked me to record on for, um, the, um, CIP and the supplemental of your projects. So there's no other questions and you can talk about the training.
Um, the only, the only thing I wanted to talk about is just the, the wayfinding signage.
Yeah.
So how, cause the Parks and Rec Commission, they're the ones that actually led that discussion because we had the, let's all go to the park series that came to Christmas Hill Park. Um, a lot of people talked about, they had no idea any of these trails were here. There's actually a big gate that blocks the trail anyways. So you're not really sure, am I allowed to go up there? Am I not allowed to go up there? It's not very inviting. So that's where, that's where it started from Michelle Wexler, the Parks and Rec Commissioner. So how can, when will you guys start brainstorming and how can we fit into the process to be able to give you more information? Um, cause she actually did a lot of research on it. She came up with the $6,000 figure. Um, that's how she came up with that quote herself. And that's what they presented to the Parks and Rec Commission as well.
So did, was that submitted by the Parks and Rec Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
So how can we work with them? Or how, how can we get in, onto your radar so then in time? So, so we can get this?
So let me touch base, let me touch base with Parks and Rec folks.
Okay.
Or actually it would be in this case, um, probably Bill Healy. And see what, uh, what his thoughts are on that. And then maybe that would help us define, um, cause I believe he manages or helps or assists with that commission. Maybe that would help us define and put a scope around the project. If there's any questions at all, I'll come back to you guys.
Okay.
Hey, Gary, is, is there an history of commissions, uh, requesting these projects in a template they followed to adequately prepare, uh, work for city council?
Uh, there, that was actually identified as a deficiency this year in the budgeting process.
Okay.
When I talked to finance, they, they acknowledged coming to the commissions, but then they also acknowledged that once they went to the commissions, it was really not a, a formal process for them submitting requests other than just verbal communications at those meetings.
Right.
And so there was an acknowledgement that they need to, we need to create a process for that. And that can happen either through staff, which I would advocate for, um, for this next time we come to the process. So what I would like to do is work with you guys, uh, as we get closer to this next year of the CIP budget, which will be, we'll probably start working on CIP projects, I would say later on this summer, September timeframe, September, October timeframe. We're going to get started brainstorming. Uh, we did a significant amount of brainstorming, uh, just recently, this last year, even with this last project, um, process and came up with a, a list of CIP project requests, um, individual projects. We came up with, uh, about 57, 58 projects, uh, in terms of program updates, about 20 program updates. Um, some of those actually got funded. Uh, there were obviously a number of them that did not, 42 of those projects that want to put a charter together and then put those in front of council and let them decide how they want to cover those. And so we would add your thoughts to others and be able to just find the projects that you'd like to see and not to be able to put some numbers in.
Uh, in, in situations where we also collaborate with other commissions, is there a formal process you'd like us to follow?
There's not a formal process, which doesn't mean we can't create one.
Yeah, I think we should handle that.
But I, I, I don't know if I want to. Well, I'll think about that. I'll think about that. I don't think I'd want to start having joint meetings, but I, but I, yeah, I don't think any, any actually, I don't think any of us do. But, uh, I think that if there's an interest in having an open conversation, I think we can certainly support that and find a way to communicate internally as staff. If you guys say, hey, there's a certain product that you'd like, that might be of similar interest to another commission, I could work through that. Commissioners liaison and that might take month to month to communicate that, but we'll, we'll see.
I just believe if we could have a united front on some issues that overlap with our requests, the city council would take that pretty seriously in their respect.
So the, and, and you know, one of the good things about the wayfinding signage is that it was a community event. It did activate those trails. Pretty much we had, what would you say? Like a hundred or so people on those trails. And I would say majority of them were like, I had no idea. I could see this. I had no idea. And you know, and there's a lot of people that use them, like cross-country school and stuff like, you know, the schools and stuff. Um, but you had, we had city council members. We had the Parks and Rec Commission. We had bike head commission. There was a lot of community involvement and, and it was like, we made an impact and we activated these trails. So that's what we were trying to build off of. And, um, yeah, so going into those, those conversations in, in the, you know, September or whatever, like that's where, that's what we tried to mold for you. And there is, the, the reason why we, that's number one is because that's our top. Like if we couldn't get anything else, that's ranked. And I think we did that too, because we had another commission that was interested in doing it also.
So, so the wayfinding signs you're talking about hiking trail wayfinding signs?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So yeah, specifically showing the people that come to Christmas Hill Park, uh, where they can go. And whether it's a trailhead one, and then one, when you get to the top and it shows you where you split off. And there's going to be another, that greenfield development on the far end of, of Uvis Creek. You know, they're going to be doing some trail building and, and you're going to get more people walking over there. So finding that synergy on that side is what, is what this wayfinding project was. Yeah.
And bringing life back to that park as well.
Exactly.
Good feedback.
Okay. Um, so while we're talking about the training budgets, we did get that extra $1,000 um, for next year. And one of the main reasons why is because Cal Bike, which is a biannual, uh, conference, uh, is meeting, um, October 15th through the 17th down in LA, um, in October. And, um, and another one that's still going to be happening this summer is on August 1st, the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, the Bike Summit. It's in Mountain View this year. And, um, so that's August 1st and the other one's October 12, 15th through the 17th. And, um, so tonight, what I want to try to do is get a head count on first, who wants to go to the Bike Summit in Mountain View? Um, so I'll take that count. And what I'll, what I'll do is we'll get, I'll take this count and then give it to Gary so he can, um, he can book them for us. So who wants to go to the Bike Summit?
All of them.
Yeah, it's, um, August 1st at the Mountain View. I believe it's at the community center. It's an all-day one.
Yeah.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, I'm still.
Um, Chad?
Thank you.
Lionel, do you, do you think you want to, do you think you want to go?
Um, I can.
Okay. Okay. So we got four of us for the, yeah, SBBC. And then the October 15th through 17th.
Neuron, you ready? Bike Summit?
Yeah.
You and me?
Yep.
Um, so Cal Bike, who would, who would like to attend the Cal Bike?
Tend to the.
Okay. Here's, here's, here's what I want to mention too, is that we were, you know, we were given the extra $1,000. Um, we still have 480 left for this year to help at least get one of those through. And we, so which means that we'd probably have room for at least two or three more people to go. So at least three people will be able to attend that. Um, I know that Sean attended a, uh, that, uh, Walk San Jose. Um, so it'd be nice to leave a little funding in that, but I think that this is an opportunity for, for those of us, it only happens every two years to go to the Cal Bike one. If we book before, uh, May 31st, it saves $75 off the budget. So, yeah, so that, that, uh, that's, doesn't mean you have to give it tonight, but if, if you feel like you want to go, um, and you look at your calendar and you want to commit to it, then, uh, try, try to make that happen before, uh, before the end of tomorrow, maybe. So that way Gary's not crammed to try to get it on the Friday. Friday's the 31st, I believe. Is that right?
Currently that works for me.
Okay.
You know, I'm interested.
Chad, are you interested at all of the bikes, the, um, Cal Bike?
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. I just started to grab my coffee.
Okay, okay. I, I get it. And Lionel, what about, what about you? Do you think?
I already have travel plans for that one.
Okay. All right. Um, Yes, please.
So that's for you.
Yeah. At least two of us. I know myself and Patrick, yes. And then are you a firm, firm yes, Sean, or you want to wait like a couple of days?
Um, it's, it's, it's a firm.
Okay. So definitely Patrick, definitely me and definitely Sean. Okay. And then Chad? And you, I mean, at least that'll give three of us the opportunity to save that, save that money on it. Um, okay.
So when do I hear back from Chad? Commissioner Chad?
Chad.
Tomorrow by the end of the day?
Yeah, by tomorrow, the end of the day.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll sum it all up and I'll send it to you, an email to you.
So I will wait, I will wait to hear back.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'll send that same, I'll use that same email that has all the links on it. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm not doing anything until I get an email.
Okay. Everybody good on that? Good? Okay. Uh, any members from the public that wish to comment? Seeing none.
So your training budget covers cost for the event?
Yeah. So, um, so there's, there's two things about it. When they, when they talked about the commissioner budget, they actually, this goes back to, um, that budget amendment that they did last summer when they, we got the training funds. They had like stipends for food, like all that kind of stuff. I, I personally think I, I personally think, and this is up for you guys to discuss too, because it did say that on there. I personally feel that if the city covers the cost and we use our training budget to, to register for the conference, which the conferences, even the Bike Summit, it pays for breakfast, lunch and after dinner, after, after the work. And the, the conference pays the same. So I would assume that we would not try to go after the hotel, all that extra stuff, because that, we don't have the budget for that anyways. Yeah, I think that we can, you know, exactly. Fly, carpool.
So I'm, I'm out.
What?
That's enough for you. I'm still waiting for the email.
Yeah. So yes, I would assume that this would just be, this would just be for the conference cost.
Just the cost.
Yeah. Does everybody concur with that? Okay. Cause otherwise we would just run right through it. But you have nothing left. And I don't think that's. No. Not at all. And it's, it's only LA. Yeah. Okay. All right. You good on that? Anything else? Okay. Next up is the Bike Lane Flyer. So this is just a discussion item and you can see the way the flyer looks. And this is coming a little bit before us doing the official like committee, but you can see what we've been working on. And we've been working on this since February, where we first introduced that one from LA Department of Transportation. And we took everybody's feedback at that meeting and we really tried to vote. And you can actually see in that letter that we wrote, that was, I believe in our February or March letter to Recology. Their general manager, Phil, and really got his feedback on it, got the public's feedback on it and how we were not going to do any, not mention anything about enforcement. It's a strictly education and encouragement. The visual that you see on here, that was feedback. It's changed a little bit, the way it looked before, but that was direct feedback from Phil. He, he really wanted to make sure that they were consistent with what Recology is asking their customers to do. And that's, that's basically put the, you know, place at the curb side, your cans at the curb side. So before this white stripe on the right side was not there. And so you weren't really sure where the curb was. So now you actually see the curb. You don't need to speak, English doesn't need to be your first language in order to understand just the visual part of the bottom part of it. And this still continues to be a problem. When I ride around, I've been paying more attention to it. And there's still some instances where Recology, there's not a vehicle parked here. This is in the, the trash cans in the bike lane. And the Recology picks it up and they put it right back in the trash lane. They don't, they don't extend the arm and push it back towards the curb. And
A lot of times there's a car parked there too.
True. Sometimes there is and sometimes there isn't. I watched it the other day personally. And there was no car that Public Works dropped off some fresh cookies to the, to the guys driving up, driving down church with Avery. And I was like, hey, I want to see it. And sure enough, there was two vehicles that were not parked there anymore. And the cans are sitting in the trash, in, in the bike lane. And I came back from my bike ride and they're emptied and still in the same spot. But that, that's not, that's something that Recology can take care of. But yeah, this is basically the flyer. So I mean, if there's any input that anybody else has to, to add or what they think about it, we're all, all ears.
Is trash cans one word or two words?
Good question. So I'll tell you, I'll, 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 I'll give you one feedback part on it. So they use the word bins, they use the word carts. And I believe in one forum, I saw totes, cans. So they have, they, they, and, and people around, you know, society or whatever, use all of them. Like nobody says, honey, can you take the carts out? You're like, what are you talking about? No, can you take the trash cans out? Or did you take the trash cans out? So what we were trying to do is capture all those words. And so that's what, and so no, I don't know specifically trash cans is an action. It didn't come up as a spelling and it would, and it didn't populate as like a red flag.
I helped design this flyer as well and source the contractor that made it. Any edits that need to be done could be done if they're minor. I wouldn't visit the whole flyer.
Yeah.
Two, two words.
Yeah. Two words.
Interesting. It didn't show as a.
So that would be one comment.
Okay. Trash cans.
So, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to share this with Rochelle.
Okay.
Well, this is a couple. If you guys are open for.
Yeah, go for it.
I'd like to share this with Rochelle, who does our noticing and get her feedback on this, because she also does this professionally. Everything we send out, we send out two languages. And so I, you know, if you're going to send out a piece of paper, every piece of paper has two sides to it. And so it would absolutely make sense to do one side in English, other side's Spanish. Cause I think a very significant portion of our community speaks Spanish. A lot of it is only Spanish. And so if you're going to want to get bank for the buck, and that buck is going to be between a thousand and $2,000 I found out today. You don't know how we're going to pay for that. You're going to want to have the biggest bank for the buck. So that's, that would be my feedback.
Yeah, I can have a double-sided.
So what about when you guys sent out the Public Works newsletter, that, that wasn't in Spanish? Do you, do you see that this, could this be attached to like page four and page five of your newsletter? Cause I think Rochelle does your newsletter, right?
Or if it can be somehow added in or something like that.
Yeah.
Let me find out.
Or even, you know, and the reason, another reason why this flyer was created was, was also to be able to capture just the lower part. You know, you could change, you could, you could change this into a JPG file and literally just use the bottom. Because just the visual below is enough sometimes. And that's another reason we had, me and Patrick had a lot of words up top. And then we started slowly taking out paragraphs and words, because it was just too, it was too much. It's too cluttered. And even Phil, he was like, that sort, we were trying to explain, remember? Jack actually brought this up where it was like, hey, someone explained that there might not be, where else am I supposed to put it? There is no curb here. We actually explained that and Phil from Recology did not like that, because they're very precise and standard. Place your carts at the curb side. There is no, if you're at the top of Third Street and there's no, there's no curb, don't worry about it. Block the bike, bike lane. There, there was no, so, so we went back to going, you know what? Just keep it super simple. Place your carts at the, at their curb side. Please don't, please don't block the bike lane. Yeah.
And if I'm going to be really, really ticky-tacky on this one.
What do you say?
It looks like the bike lane is right adjacent to an existing curb. And if you're going to float a bike lane out there, you can't, it shouldn't be next to a curb.
And those Recology's edits that they requested of us to show, and I know it doesn't reflect what's worth it.
Cause we didn't, yeah, we, yeah. I mean, that's Third Street, the top of Third Street, that's Third Street right there. There is no, there is no curb and gutter at, is that what you mean?
No, I see what you, yeah, okay.
It was hard to capture it all, because there's so many places around here that just don't have, I mean, what about the top of Upper Mantelli doesn't have?
So brainstorming here. Let me take a look at it.
Okay. Cool.
We've got to work through.
Uh, either of us, but Zach should be.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not a majority if you mump up the votes. So we should be good.
There's not three of you guys.
No.
Would there be any way to also show what should be done visually?
Then it gets too cluttered.
It's too cluttered.
Then it becomes less of a message and more of a, what is this? I'm putting it aside.
And so, so here I can answer you on that part, is that Recology already has a standard flyer that they send to like new residents and stuff. And it actually shows carts, their carts against, you know, the curb. And it showed, the wheels against the curb was another feedback we got, where they wanted to have, can you also write place at the curb and wheels at the curb? And we talked about like, that's just too much, like.
So you don't like, don't trash the bike lane, wheels against the curb and eighteen inches apart. So I always get that one.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I like this. I get the same thing I get on that every time.
So no, we did get that feedback. He talked to his, he talked to his staff and, and his staff kind of threw in this, a week late after we had this great discussion. Yeah. And they were like, hey, what about we throwing this and this and this? We're like, oh, we can keep doing a lot of this, but I think the less, the better. The visual, like we want the general person that probably doesn't read the inserts in their bills, whatever, just glance at it, be like, oh, oops, I do that. Or, oh, I didn't realize that I did that or whatever. But
Zach, can I give some?
Yes.
So you're showing an image of what not to do, but I think it would be helpful to show an image of how it should be done.
So that, that's what I was trying to say is that Recology already has that marketing material. They already have their own in-house flyer that they send out periodically. And one thing that, that we were able to get on there is that he agreed that he would write, you know, please do not like block the bike lane. He was going to add that to his communication already. I, I agree with you. Maybe, maybe like a new resident would get like, you know, this, somehow see this message, but then they'll, they'll also get that in their bill inserts. And that, I don't think I've seen it since I either went on their website. I don't remember the last time I looked at my Recology bill and saw a visualization. I'm sure it's come up in the last couple of years.
I think the challenge with that is, for example, customers like myself, where I set up an automatic thing. So I don't even look at the, at the bill.
Yeah.
So I'll never get that flyer that they sent.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. The only reason why I look at it is because I get the free, if you look at it, you can get the free. Yeah. And you got to know the call, but so.
Somehow they, they stand out like, because we do get those.
Okay. Well, that would be another reason why it'd be nice to be able to use, you know, these other avenues or at least explore them. Like whether it's in the water bill, the Recology bill, you know, just maybe just the City Express, maybe.
Service on our website briefly.
On our website, just the visualization. I don't know what.
So even the City Express would be something.
Yeah. And she, she could, you know, she doesn't want the whole top, you know, she could just crop out that bottom part.
So maybe not, maybe not necessarily in the water bills, but maybe just City Express would be something I could.
Yeah. I mean, th- this is your guys', this is everybody's tool.
And this is the only rest I can do. Water bill's going to cost much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, yeah.
And this is City Express, can we have like caveats on this where maybe like once or twice a year this goes out? So it's a consistent message? I would hate for this to be a one-off.
So I think Chad was bringing this up. They, they will sometimes, I think, give you a flyer if they see you not doing things the way you want consistently.
Oh yeah, if you're cramming them together.
And so maybe this could be another reason for the staff from Recology to put a flyer if somebody's consistently not doing it correctly.
I've seen that violate. My neighbor got that one, because he kept leaving all the cans together so the arm can go around it.
Ten thousand cars. And I've heard this a hundred times.
Yeah.
They get moved around.
And so like it's all time. Get out of your vehicle. Come on now.
But I think, I think Sean's right. I mean, why not keep these in their, keep them in their trucks with them? As they see people, just like they gave it eighteen inches, they also put kids in the bike. But also too, sometimes other cars.
If you're on the first in fraction, you don't get your trash picked up next week. That could be pretty clear. Just kidding.
But I think you're right. You do it electronically, that goes out free and then see if they're willing to have their drivers hand it out.
I think we've established a really good relationship with Phil and, and realized that this is just a tool that we're trying to help them with. And that it did come from the, from the public and it, it is what it is, you know? It didn't, it, so. Anything else? Any members in the public, public that wish to comment? All right. Next up is two subcommittees that want to get formed. The first one, I'll let Patrick talk about, it's the Citizens for Safe Crosswalks. And, and before we get into it, Patrick, so remember last month when we, when Sean Affreele, the city clerk, came to us? We asked her like, how do we establish a subcommittee if we want to establish one? Me and Chad were, I had one like two years ago for Green Bike Lanes, you remember that? Where we worked with Michael Fisher and then it kind of went away. So it, it's, from past factors, it looks like if you're going to establish a subcommittee, that's probably going to meet indefinitely for a while, then it's a subcommittee. If you're going to establish something like we are just for this bike lane, we're not planning on working on this forever. So it's more of an ad hoc committee. These committees would be obviously work for this commission. They can meet whenever they want. There's no Brown Act meeting notices or anything like that. As long as, for us, as long as there's not more than two people present at that meeting. And this is very strict on this, because it's not as if we're all going to go get education. You're going to be there specifically talking about a discussion item. So it's only two people allowed. So we, that has to be followed very strictly.
So then every month they go back and report.
So it could either be a standing item, kind of like how we've done with the Safe Crosses School. It could be something as simple as coming to a meeting like right now and going, you know what? I, I really don't have any much more to talk about, you know, the bike lanes committees. So you know, there's no need for us to have it on the next agenda. But agendas get created, you know, the week before this meeting. So if, if someone has a sub, if someone has a committee and they're like, you know what? Actually I do have some stuff want to bring back. Then all you have to do is email myself and Gary. And when we meet and sit and discuss the agenda, then you, you have something to bring back. So any action items that happen inside these committees are brought to the commission for full agreement among all of us. That's the same website, all that other stuff. So yeah, go ahead.
Awesome. The real name of this committee is going to be Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee. I'm just going to read you guys the mission statement. I made a general summary of what this committee will be and I'll have that attached to your next meeting's agenda for a brief review. I have a mission statement for it, and that is to directly engage with the citizens of Gilroy and transform them into key stakeholders in matters concerning the Gilroy impact. Using city-executed data collection processes to advocate for improvements to our shared bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So I have short-term goals that I've identified for this program, committee. Increase in meaningful dialogue with citizens. Provide quarterly updates of field-collected data points on pedestrian behavior and safety. Gather updated information on high collision locations within Gilroy. And identify and provide data for non-tallyed locations to establish baselines and measuring points. Long-term aspects of this committee are, provide meaningful data points for updating the bicycle pedestrian transportation plan. Establish a pedestrian master plan for Gilroy. Establish a yearly walkability report card that evaluates safety. And use data points to advocate for specific pedestrian safety for the projects. In getting the summary made, I reviewed the following documents. Resolution number 2012-XX, Complete Streets Policy Resolution. That advocates directly for our committee to be formed. The Complete Streets Resolution means the city has to take the best efforts possible to ensure that the safety is met for pedestrians, bicyclists and automobiles alike. The streets have to be maintained and give access to all. So that resolution gives me some ammunition to make this subcommittee, seeing the city have this bio. A second document I've worked through was the Pedestrian Safety Assessment and Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, published in September 2013. And this is a plan the city requested to be drafted up in seeing where we fall short in pedestrian matters. Many different areas were found to be lacking, if not even non-existent. I have these summarized in this analysis that I'll have provided in the next agenda. Number three is the City of Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Transportation Plan. The only copy of which was published in February of 2002. It has not been updated since and it is still lacking pedestrian. Fourth is the Senate Clarity Pedestrian Plan, which is attached, has an example of what pedestrian master plan can be, something we can model off of. And last, I'm going to be using SRT data collection techniques. And I'll be setting up some meetings with Gary and Naron to go over city-approved collection practices. So I can align this subcommittee properly so the data that is collected and reported to us is accurate and meaningful. So there will be a full summary available for public review and this commission's review next meeting.
I would recommend you have Commissioner Sean participate, because he did go through a data collection training. I don't use the rap word. There were, there were so few reasons I thought this, it'd be good to be, be involved in this. Specifically to that though, that was actually a broader conference about pedestrian issues. But I did help public help with some of the data gathering they did in their attempt to get the ATP grant.
Oh yeah. And I know, I, I know that that, that area, in the quality management district, there's needs to be updates on counts. I think with that too. And I think we got the counts from Safe Crosses School. And I think we got the counts from Safe Crosses School.
I think we, uh, we have specific criteria. We have a, uh, specific criterias of how we're supposed to conduct the count. I have that documentation. Still do have to. Do a benchmark count now for those who are bicycle and pedestrian. So I'll share the document.
Cool.
Thanks, everyone.
Um, any other discussion?
Are we, are we going? This is what's next.
Oh, yeah, so, oh, yeah, basically, it would just be a motion to approve, uh, the, the subcommittee.
That, that's a huge ask, so, uh, it sounds like you're ready to take it on. I mean, I think it's awesome. I mean, you were saying, I think anything to do with, uh, remote safety around here, I know. Um, that's why you prepared me to ask Gary about orange intensity, that was one of my pet peeves, and I appreciate that you put it on there, but it's, it's, it's doing things like that, intersections that you're aware of, and if you wanna go out there and find the intersections that you're not aware of, and just looking at the data and stuff, I think it's awesome. So I'm, I'm all for it, so I just, of course, I won't be able to help out too much. I struggle with just doing things I do.
Thanks.
Yeah, ma- make, make the motion to approve the.
Make a motion, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to create a subcommittee called.
Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee.
Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee.
I'll second it.
So we just have, is it just Patrick one? So it says two people, are we gonna not make a second person, or are we just Patrick?
No, just Pat, just put Patrick in it. And then that way, that way, there's not, it, there's not like a commission, uh, commitment that Sean always has to be there.
So Patrick's role wasn't needed, but there wasn't a creative, that should have been different. One of us helping each other as long as you don't want them to hit one person.
Correct.
Making the chair, sir.
Yeah.
We're to make the chair.
Yeah. There we go.
Thanks.
Official. Um, so all in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, good. Um, any members in the public that wish to comment? I know, sorry. Well, I already messed something else too, because for some reason, we finished talking about training, and I went right to the middle of the packet. I had no idea why. Apologize. Um, so let's move back up to old business, Bike to Work Day update. Um, I'll let either Sean or Lionel or Patrick, anybody that was there, uh, give an update.
Bike to Work Day was a very decent success. We passed out all thirty of our bags, and we met with, I think, around forty people on bikes that we tally, uh, in total that came up and spoke with us. And, uh, we passed out lots of coffee, lots of sandwiches, and it seemed to be catching steam, like, it's really starting to take off. So I think, uh, committing to Bike to Work Day in the future and keeping it present there is definitely a problem.
It was twenty-second year, it's partying it, and I guess it didn't seem to improve it.
Uh, for end count increase of participants, so the messages gave the props.
Just being a cyclist, it goes, it really takes advantage of these, uh, energizer stations. I really appreciate it. I didn't help out, I was just trained, and your passion, I have written it, uh, to work, but it's, it's great, and, um, I think, um, next year would be nice. I just gotta think financially, and I was, I'd love to put shirts together and say, I buy a bike, how about, and it's, it literally works on my phone as soon as we find that, the stop that has it, it just lights up, and it tells everybody that this is the stop you go to to get those shirts. I mean, it's something small, I mean, shirts are probably six or seven dollars again, you know? But, um, just gotta figure out, I'm not saying shirt, but next year, I mean, something a little different than, you know, about.
Yeah.
We figure out like of that energizer station. Yeah, yeah, great, thank you, everybody, for helping.
Uh, well, we, interesting, we actually did have somebody specifically ask us for a shirt, I think.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just one.
We had to.
Really?
Oh, I get it.
Yeah, Chad's going.
Uh, one thing that we could, uh, that, that our group that was there, it, like, like they said, it went really well, and we, we see, uh, people seeming to be more excited to make sure they show up. Uh, we could have done a little better job making sure that, uh, advertised to people to sign, sign their name and, and provide an email so that we can get communication out to them ourselves and, and pursue the follow-up by some collection. Um, we also noticed that, um, it'd be nice if at some point we considered possibly finding a way to have, uh, a nicer tabletop than the table I heard that, uh, Fred Tovar might be helping us with that. Um, and then also the pop-up that we, that we have, we've just been using Zacks, and, uh, might wanna consider making sure we talk with people sitting far enough ahead of time that we can use one of those, or that we have one that is, uh, you know, nicer and reflects, makes it clear that it's from City of Gilroy or, or the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. The one that we used some years ago was from Parks and Rec in it. I think it was green, said Parks and Rec Department. Was there anything else that, uh, any, any that were there, that anything as far as things to consider for the future or improve, besides what I mentioned?
You touched on all of that, and that is messaging about who we are and why we're there, and up until you come right to our, our location, it's not exactly.
Okay. Do you wanna say anything about the city room? See?
Um, we actually did not have a pop-up.
Okay.
Or a, a energizer station. What we had was a raffle, that, an email that went out, so folks that, uh, rode their bike to City Hall were, it would be entered in raffle for prizes.
Nice. Thanks. Okay, uh, any members from the public that wish to comment? See none? Yes, Carolyn. Sorry.
Just like I said, I was looking for the, uh, energizer station on key road, straight and on the right and round to find it. There's some clear, you know, clear numbers, if I see. A sign or something on that side.
To point the direction.
Yeah. It was the excuse to get out.
And thank you, Carolyn, for that comment, because we could do a better job with signage, and, uh, there were some signs provided, uh, to us, but I don't, I don't know who made an effort to go.
I put them at some of the coffee shops, and I, I kinda scattered them around for the Caltrain, on the Caltrain station, and the bus shelters and stuff.
Uh, another thing I wanna mention is, uh, speaking of how, which successful that means we did, managed, I think, for the first time to use all the bags that we have, and, and so might need to get a little more next year.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is, is there an item that, um, that you wanna, Neuron, to stick around for specifically?
Uh, yeah, I can bring it.
Okay. Um, all right, so we're gonna move up, if you, or move down, sorry. Uh, nine, nine E, the new business, Bike Lane Usage Subcommittee. Um, so this is the, this is a spinoff from the, the flyer that you guys all saw before. Um, so this would be an ad hoc committee to kinda work on, work with staff and myself and Patrick, um, to continue, continue working with, uh, Phil from Recology to make sure that he's comfortable with the messaging, and if there's anything specific that we can do, um, with the, the messaging uh, beyond the flyer. And I don't see this, uh, sticking around for, you know, beyond the summertime. Um, but it just gives us a chance to build a sort of work offline, and then we'll bring something back, um, if we need to in, uh, in June or, or any other time.
So specifically related to Recology and the, the bike lane usage in the trash or something?
Correct, it's, it's just specifically for this.
Okay, it's not looking at bike lanes.
Nope.
City or restructuring or anything.
Nope, nope, no, none of that. It's just.
That's good news.
Sorry. Sorry, if that, that radar was pinged out, that way, has nothing to do with that. We, it, it realistically, I, I don't even know what, what do we call it? What do I, what do I even name it? So it doesn't, I don't want, I don't want that to happen.
Flyer committee?
Bike, uh.
Don't trash the bike lane.
Don't Trash the Bike Lane Committee? Be really specific? Okay, so.
No mistakes.
So I'll, I'll make a, I wanna make a motion that it will be that, um, I create a, and I'll chair it, the, um, ad hoc committee for Don't Trash the Bike Lane. Don't Trash the Bike Lane Committee. Do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry, Neuron.
It's just clear, that's a subcommittee.
That's a subcommittee.
And, uh, of course, Neuron and I are always available if you have any questions about bike lanes.
Of course. Thank you. Sorry if I gave that vibe out. I don't need anything else to, to do either. Okay. Oh, that was funny. Okay. Um, all right, uh, so back up to old business, um, the Lucesse Bridge Cleaning Service Request. Um, and I don't know who should, do you wanna start this off, Gary? Or Chad can start, maybe Chad can provide a little context on the history of what, of what he's done personally to advocate for this, since he uses it every day. Yeah. Just like a little short, short recap, and we'll talk about it right now.
Kinda be short. So many years, a couple of years ago, uh, Lucesse Bridge, uh, so Lucesse Bridge is definitely not the solution to. In a perfect world, uh, how to get pedestrians to cross. It's, it's where we know there's a future bridge coming that will see Lucesse, it's gonna be four lanes. It's gonna be a better bridge, it'll be designed for, like, we don't have it right now. Costs a lot of money in the region, so, um, looking at kind of things we can do now. One of those was, we worked with, uh, traffic engineer, uh, Michael Fisher, uh, and he was able to widen the northern side of Lucesse, that's why it was only one side, um, of that. Um, actually, it goes back to you, for the two saves. Who was the gentleman?
Henry Serene?
No, I, no, no, no.
Sorry.
Who was, uh, the walking on the gentleman from, I don't know, um. Do you remember? Anyway, he, he actually, I, I told him that problem, he was the one telling me, hey, here's what you can tell your traffic engineer, I started to work with Michael Fisher. Ah, gee, it's a motherfucker.
I'll find it. Mark Fenton.
Thank you.
Been a while since we spoke.
Yeah, he, uh, suggested how we can make it work. He'd seen it, and then so we're going with Michael Fisher, we got it to a solution. Uh, it's way better than it was, it's a lot better than it was. Uh, I ride that bridge on his front, uh, two in front of it. Um, I go in the fast lane there, uh, on the way to work, and then I kind of slowed on that, nice protective, uh, side of the bridge. Um, the downside of having the, uh, vertical cleaners, um, is being. Um, one thing I would say is that what, uh, other cities do, um, they, I assume, on, but I can see, um, you ran on, but there's, uh, maybe four foot wide cleaner, street cleaners, uh, to keep the road clean, because what happens is the, the dust and sand builds up on there, and then broken bottles and broken glass, and that's when it gets bad. Especially it's a, yeah, there's a lot more kids who walk and ride their bikes than get to school. Um, so one of my suggestions is gonna be, and I didn't wanna talk about it, uh, Gary, you talked about your operational budget, which is not necessarily your budget, but for public works, public works, I think, really needs to put in there a three times a year, four times a year cleaning of that bridge in their operational budget. Um, so I don't know what it costs them. This time, it looks like it went faster than the first time they did it, or off the vacuum machine, and I had eight or nine workers there, uh, city workers. This time, it looked like it happened during the day real quick, so hopefully, if you're gonna wait, a lot cheaper. Uh, I realize it's, it does cost some money to get it cleaned, but it's, uh, it's a valuable resource to keep. So, um, thank you for getting, that's, or maybe you went out there with a leaf blower, I wasn't sure.
I got tired of it. He was getting close to it. He told me he was getting close to it.
So.
Me, I, I have one, I have one solution to throw out there, too. Us as a commission talked about trying to, um, join up with those, uh, signs you'll see around town for, um, you know, uh, we, what are they called?
Adopt a.
Adopt a.
Adopt a bike pack.
Yeah, so, so basically, like, some, you know, there are, there used to be a Santa Clara Value Water District grant-funded program, you know, you would get like rakes and bags and that kind of stuff, and you'd go out there, however many, you're, I don't know what the commitment was, at once every three months, and you would pick up trash like along the street. And so you see the, the names of them out there. Well, we tried to do that, we tried to, like, okay, let us adopt one, because the Parks and Rec Commission actually has their name on a, at, uh, Carriage Hills Park. And then that's when I found that the program's no longer existent. But if it does ever come back, that's why the signs are still up, so that you can go back on there. We, we, this in could adopt this way, um, and make a, you know, whether it's on a Saturday morning or whatever, we take out some leaf blowers, and we take out some, some brooms, and get, you get down and dirty.
More brooms than leaf blowers, guys.
Um.
Sounds fun.
And.
So, so why, why have the programs disappeared?
It was grant-funded through the Water District, it only lasted for so long, you know? It'd be, it, it, many cities have it like an adopted drain program, you know? Where the city would provide garbage bags and stuff like that. And actually, I, I, they did say, if you want garbage bags, or you guys just wanna do something, we'll, we'll still do that, but we're not doing the signage, there's no money to make sure, uh, uh, in, in the past, it would, a staff member would, be like, okay, uh, you know, Parks and Rec Commission, they went to Carriage Hills Park, you know, someone's checking on it, right? To see if it's actually still doing it, and, um, that, that got, to win the grant fund loss.
Well, I, I mean, grant fund, not grant fund, like, it's a sign cost a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a custom, custom sign, and it's a hundred bucks to install it. Uh, and I could certainly talk to folks about that potentially. Uh, you know, there's real cost in actually administering something like that day of the event, because you're talking about staff time, you're talking about, you know, somebody, um, bringing out the van of people, you're talking about, um, you know, the, the, being there, monitoring, assisting, providing the equipment, all those types of things. Um, so that becomes a costly type of thing, if you're gonna do an organized type of event. But if it's something where it doesn't have to be organized.
Yeah.
I don't know why you have to.
Just impromptu.
You guys organize it on your own, you guys just.
Just do it.
And do, you know, third, you know, once a quarter, the first Saturday of the quarter, and you guys just meet out there and just, you know?
Knock it out.
Look both ways and knock it out.
Bring the kids.
I got safety vests, we have more safety vests.
Yeah, I mean, but, and we're not even in the roadway anyways, it's, it's a protected.
We provide, we provide you the training, and, yeah, you guys, you look both ways and wear your vests, and, you know, goggles and, yeah, protective boots, and, you know, that should be.
I don't think it would be.
But I, I would say is, if we, you know, I think the signs are nice, we, if we can get signs, like, the cost of signs, a hundred dollars a sign, or two hundred dollars a hundred, a hundred installed, there's already holes everywhere, I'm scouting out that, there's enough. But what we could put, uh, uh, maintained by Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, and then we could put the email address.
Yes.
So when it says, hey, dirty, here's an email address, right there's a sign, email us a lot of stuff, if you think it's too dirty or whatever, so, might get more people actually.
Yeah.
Might get like four people.
And I don't know if that's ever a, a chan, an opportunity, once the traffic calming, um, policy comes on board, whether that section of roadway could be looked at, and if there's any way to just chill people out, because the way that that, there's no stop, that, that turn just sucks people. You get sucked into that Lucesse turn, you just fly over the bridge.
You're going.
It's so fast.
Going east.
Yeah.
Thomas made that right.
Yeah, there's, there's no, it's a.
The gap you go in.
Yeah, you just, and fly over the bridge. There's, I mean.
That's a sheriff.
I know you have that, there's a toolkit inside that traffic calming that, something, I mean, even some signage or some, uh, I don't know, rumble strips or something, just to make, you know, something that stands out to be aware. There's no signage besides the reflectors, and man, those reflectors, like that citizen said in his letter, they, the, the ones that got replaced look awesome, but it's scary to think how many of those are beat up, and whether that's, hopefully that's at night, or a truck, or no.
Well, I mean, I went and looked, they're all replaced, I mean, they're all.
Yeah, it looks great right now.
I mean, it, it looks, it looks a lot better. Um, but I will say, I think personally, from before and after, I think that traffic slowed down because of the two. When I go across, they're not home. They're usually flying. So personally, I think it's helped.
Okay.
But again, it's, it's a mandate, right?
So what I can, you know, there's obviously stuff that has to happen with that bridge. Quinlan is responsible for doing some stuff out there. We have looked into the cost of doing full replacement, all the delineators with. Delineators that actually bolt down and have sprinkler or spring loaded. That I think are thirty mile an hour rated in terms of crash rating. It's eight thousand bucks to replace them all. And so we don't have the funding for that. However, as we were talking, I just pulled up the CIP list for next year, added Lucesse Bridge Safety Improvements, Pedestrian Bike Lane Safety Improvements. As a new project that we'll be looking into. So we can actually ask for funding for that.
Yeah, I mean, often. I know I spent so much money, we're going to get a new bridge again, so, but I want people to be safe.
It more or less is an interim. And even if we do get a new bridge, it's going to be many, 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 many years.
It's the cleaning thing.
They're all part of, part of our city. The cleaning is something we can look at. And, you know, the minimum, we'll look at adding into a chaotic maintenance that we can put in and have the guys go out there on a regular basis. Or we can look into the adopted grid tour, you know, and a separate thing, we can look at safety improvements out there. When the traffic calming document comes out, we can look at adding that to the list for evaluation. So there is other things we can do and it's, it's an identified location. We know it's a follow.
Anybody have anything else they want to add? Any members in the public that wish to comment? All right. Thank you very much. So let's see where, let's talk here. Okay, one more item, bicycle fix-it locations. I'll let Sean talk about this first since he was the one that, that got it, but you can, for reference to look, you can look at the attached map. The zero fix-it map. On here somewhere. I pulled this, actually, I made this when Alisa started asking me questions about where our current ones are. And this is what it looks like if you're a user of those fix-it stations already there. If you go to their website on the left, it, it uses your location where you're at. And then these little things ping up and it shows you where the current one is. And so they're all over the Bay Area. So it shows you this whole network of wherever you are. So we've got the three of them that are on there. And then we got three future ones, not including the one that's going to be talked about right now.
Right, so Alisa Campbell from Public Health, she's offered to get, you know, give us one, give us another fix-it station. And she was seeking feedback at the St. school task force meeting where we had school, school district people there. Commissioner Patrick and I were there. She sent, I think, an email to, to engineering, to Public Works. She sent an email, I think, to bicycle pedestrian commissioners and I, so. We've talked about different ideas and discussions, but I said, let's put this up whole and bring it to our meeting so that we make sure we're following the Brown Act when we talk about this. So I believe she, we've come up with three possible locations that I've seen her mention either publicly or in emails. And we just need to discuss, you know, what our ideas are here, where we think we should go. One idea is San Ysidro Park, especially with that new bike path opening. And there aren't any other fix-it stations on the east side of town and they're not planned where, if you look at the, the map that Zach provided, there's three listed that we expect to be coming by, by developers, none of them are on the east side of town, because that's not where developments happen. Let's see, another idea was, who can help me remember where the other locations were that we took?
Gilroy Sports Park.
Gilroy Sports Park. And then the third one I saw in her email, she mentioned, and I think this one has some merit as well, but something along the current path that we have, but not necessarily over where one will already be provided by developers, over by Santa Teresa. That, that seems like that area is going to be covered well enough. Sports Park was another idea. That's all the way to the other end, but I think she had an idea made Christmas Hill Park. There is a, a school there and it's also more central and there's not, there's no fix-it station near there, but those are the three ideas I've seen mentioned by people.
That's also where the bike pump track, the dirt pump tracks.
That was why that one jumped out to me, right, because the bike pump traps, so that one, I was like, oh, that actually does have some merit as well.
So I, I think the idea, and do you have anything to add?
I would just ask if there's any schools that have a very high rate of bicycle ridership that might want to send it to.
So, yeah, so.
So originally, there was a lot of discussion saying maybe we need to do it on the east side of San Ysidro because there's already a bunch of ones going to be over by Santa Teresa area. However, we have, that location has the BMX pump track possibly going in and has the specialized bike program happening at that school. And it's central to the, to the levy system.
Because the kids for solar suno do use that, that, the hazard there. Those, so that the other, the flip side about San Ysidro is that, that, that bike head path is just not completed yet. So it would be like accepting the, the, you know, the fix-it station and then just having Public Works, you know, the yard, like just hold on to it until it's finished.
That's why I advocated for Sports Park, so the trail that.
It's already there. I, I, I can tell you that these units cost around twelve to thirteen hundred dollars depending on if you, which size air pump you get with it. If you get the real big one that you'll see, like by the library, it's a little more expensive. If you get the one that you see by like downtown, it's just a smaller, smaller gauge. Surface. It's all surface. It's, it's, so it's the same as all the other ones. You can pick it up and move it whenever you want. Yeah. So there's, yeah, no, no breaking ground or anything.
So we have one, okay, one. I mean, I think that, I just think because it's. I think Christmas Hill Park slash Levy slash Solar Suno, just that you already have so much there. I think that's definitely the place to put it right now. But I think, I'm trying to figure out how you, if you do it, where the, because you know how the Levy Trail comes back around, comes the Solar Suno, it's right there. It's kind of a trailhead, being a trailhead as opposed to the school, then pump track won't be too far away. It might be like the best area.
Only if we can speak to the public.
Is there any?
They're listening, right, they're listening, right?
So I, I mean, I guess what we could do is just get like, is like, just come up with like a talk to recommendation?
What, when we do what we do with the signs, Gilroy signs, why don't we put together a top ten as, as we did. You know, it's always, you know, you negotiate, you kind of.
What about using our calendar that's on our website and making an event where people in the city can take a possible location to respond? And then surface that through some media.
And just come back in June?
One thing.
Was there like a deadline or anything from Alisa?
I never heard of deadline.
I, I don't know about that, I can check with her. One thing, if, if we do narrow it down to, it seemingly need to be near Christmas Hill Park somewhere. We, we don't want it to be too far, like northwest, because there's already going to be one putting by a developer at some point at first in Santa Teresa.
Yeah. No, no, the Hecarp Pass.
And the Hecarp Pass there, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So why don't we just bring this item, bring this item back? As commissioners and staff, just go out, talk to your, talk to people, bring some feedback, some more definitive stuff and then we'll give, we'll, we'll come up with a recommendation for the one location at the next meeting. Sound good? Cool? Okay. All right. So next up is item nine B, use of public fund requests. So we have, obviously we have the public fund, we have a balance in there right now, it's five hundred eighty-nine dollars. The decal program that, you know, we created this whole fund in the decal program to be able to you know, collect funds off the, the decal stickers, you know, the donation stickers. And in order to put money into this fund, there was some, obviously some money in there that we ended up finding too, that was from people that were volunteering at the the Gilroy Garlic Festival. So, but what's not, what, what we never dwelled into is, is, is the bike fund, is it allowed to be used? Any, is there any like admin stuff it can be used for? Can it be used to directly fund the, the flyer that we created? Could it be, could it, you know, Chad talked about, could it go to directly fund the, the storage container? You know, it has to be specific. I know, I know public money can't just be like, hey, I want to donate to, to Gary's Fund for Veterans or something like that. Has to be, you have to be able to touch it. And I know ultimately a lot of this stuff's, you know, it's like Gary mentioned earlier, you know, for bike racks. You know, I would love to get to the point where we could have a business say, you know what, I get a lot of traffic of bicycle riders and they're parking them on the, on the trees and on the street poles, you know, so they could come to us and then, you know, and we could have an actual program that says, well, here we can purchase an inverted U-rack for a hundred dollars or whatever it is. So have you been able to get any feedback at all from finance?
In terms of the donation?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, like, yeah, exactly. What it needs to specifically look like.
So I, I asked the question of finance and they are looking into it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they're right in the middle of the budget and they're hoping to get me an answer by the end of this week.
Okay.
So at that point, I can respond back to you. The initial thought is, well, I don't know, I don't want to say what the initial thought is.
I think it has to be tangible with a purpose.
I believe, I believe that you could request that the city council make a donation. But I'm not sure that you could use your funds to, as a donation. I think you can buy something tangible with it, like a bike rack. And I think when you look at how that fund was created and what it was created for, I think that's what it can be used for.
Yeah.
And I think it was created as to donate funding to, for bike racks.
Yeah. So, and I, and I know that the council ran into this when they, Gilroy Leadership asked them to donate towards the mural that's next to the art center on the other side of the music thing. And they ran into it too, where it was kind of like, well, we can't really like, can't really like donate to Gilroy Leadership. But I can donate to the, I want to donate to that mural, but they couldn't get their name on it because of that. So what they ended up, it was, it, it looked too much as a, of a donation rather than of actual, like something physical that you're going to use or whatnot. I don't even know the word for it. But what they ended up doing is just, they came together themselves, that city, that city council, and they each put in their, you know, they each put in money together so they could be a part of it. So that's how they got around that. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, is that for, like, we have two items right now. Chad has been talking about trying to give money to Solar Suno Middle, which bought a storage container for all those bicycles that they're storing for specialized.
There's a great chance two other schools are going to get that same program. So, you know, what can we do to help, you know? So maybe it's not as, it has to be tangible, you know, can we buy a bike? Buy a bike instead of donating to someone sort of involved.
Yeah, and then Patrick paid a contractor for the, for the flyer. We, he initially was doing it all on his own, but then it got way too technical and we were using someone else's art anyways. So he, with his, you know, people that he has, where he paid a con fifty-two dollars. So that, that's where these little items are. And so, so what I'm trying to say is we can talk about this offline or whatever, but if we can't use the funding for that, then what I would suggest is that each of us, since this is something that we came up with, from a suggestion of a citizen, that we just PayPal Patrick the seven dollars each or whatever ends up being. And, and, you know, I, I'll, I'll do that. But, you know, another thing that I'll commit to is if we can't figure out a way to somehow support as a commission that the Solar Suno, what's happening over there, you know, I'm more than willing to, to make a donation to the homeschool club, you know, and if you guys would match that too, between the five of us. And we'll know what it's coming from, Chad can give them a check or whatever, we can all give Chad money. But I'm, I'm totally down with doing that and just keeping it completely off the, the fund. So we can talk about that.
Yeah.
Fine. Okay, just throwing that out there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Maybe we should, we start thinking of, you know, where we think we might need money. Other things, something like the shirts, right? I want the shirt, so we want more shirts. They're, they're cool. I think they're cool, right? I mean, that's great artwork. If you go places, people like our shirt, you have the shirt to wear, so.
Okay. All right, any public comment on this item? Any more discussion? Anything to add? Okay, all right. So that's it, right? Did I not, I hit everything? Yes, 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 yes. Correspondence, we already talked about that, oral reports by commission members. Sean, I'll let you go first.
I don't really have anything else besides I did mention that we want to have something that really shows who we are when we have events like Bike to Work Day. That looks nice and professional and, you know, and I realized after saying that, that there's, you know, like three other events that I'm going to be going to next month. And so we've been, you know, bringing Zach's pop-up, we're going to use them, just something to ban about in the future. Now, that's not a pop-up.
Yeah, so that'd be another question. Can we, you know, if it's equipment directly related to the, you know.
Promotion.
Promotion of bike friendly community, like, how are we going to word it? Yeah, that would, that would be, yeah, that would be good to know about the public. Commissioner Patrick Club.
Many of my points have already been touched on, but I would like to say thank you to our staff players on, Gary Key. If they're on this absence, we're really driving home that we can have a website that is useful and the community can benefit from. And I want to remind all my fellow commissioners, we made the use of that calendar, surface those details as they get approved. Let's get more citizens involved with what we do, so we have more people can contribute.
Copy that. Commissioner Lionel Gonzalez.
I just wanted to thank Commissioner.
Commissioner Chad Reader.
Yeah, I wanted to read everything, thank you Patrick, I mean. Having the, you know, it happens, having the thought to do something, but actually getting out and doing it, it's two different things. So, no objection. Sorry, this is a bit flawless.
I take it.
But yeah, and so, so I just might tie this, I'm not sure. I noticed we have a G-PAC Facebook.
The G-PAC? I didn't do it. I'm not even on the G-PAC. I don't know, it could have been. It could have been something that they, they created. Oh, B-PAC. At least said G-PAC.
We've had that for a while. Zach got it going and I just helped with it very minimally. And just Patrick.
Yeah, Patrick.
I stopped my wife's.
If you can make an account and engage our citizens, whether it's no one means or happens, then great.
So this is a, and I know we can't have a discussion, all right, this is our, so, so I'm going to ask Gary to, like, keep me to send you an email. I noticed I was out running this weekend and Miller and San Ysidro Roundabout has some great pedestrian legalization. Only half the roundabout has. So do we know the rest of the roundabouts, any of the pedestrian crossing and legalization? I can only imagine as part of the Quinlan development base, added that, but it's, I didn't see it. I may have missed it. It's really, it's neat how they did it, it was a push button and the one, you have to look to see one of the signs underneath it has the blinking LED, blinking lights. But then I looked across, so on the, you know, the west side of San Ysidro, I didn't see anyone that's on it. Maybe it's on yet, maybe. Same kind of, they weren't all installed.
So it's been awhile since I've been out there. So I know that they've got a diversion going right now while they're building new Miller realignment or the alignments. So they've got a, a diverter going. It could be that they've got some of that partially down or there's a need to reconstruct that area. Let me look into that.
All right, but it's very interesting, it's not a whole, a whole roundabout. I don't think people do a lot of walking. Very bad. And again, thank you Gary for just putting on the budget, hopefully it's approved someday the next. See, has to be a little bit of the operational budget for that ten. Operational budget that includes some capital projects that San Ysidro. Unfortunately, Dr. Sanchez is now leaving and I talked to him about it three years ago and the question part of this, and I, who has gone to that too. She's still around, but it's, I hope that it goes through. And then, I'm not quite sure how to do this, but I'd like to start working with developers when they come to the city. So the Class One Bike Path in San Ysidro is a partial. I know the county added a whole portion, a big portion to what was existing. Now I believe the two developers are probably into, I believe it's all developers. It's all developers. You know, I realize the first thing they want to do is not build a bike path, it's not making money. But there's enough development there that I, I'd like, I don't know if we can bring them, talk to them or, I don't know, I want to reach out to them, but I think if, if we could at least get them to start putting in the bike paths now, because I think it shows too, it's tough some seller house. Because you have a school right there and your bike path already set up, city takes, you know, we can commission, take ownership of it sooner than we can hold it back. But I think it's a great selling point for the, the school as well. You know, I know I see a lot of people out there running as well. It's just not, I, I know it's coming, it's not done. I just like to start seeing what would it take to get those further along and what, how many houses, you know, is there a certain point where is there those many houses that would be kind of profitable? point where they're going to build so many houses, it'd be kind of profitable, start looking into it, sort of thing. I think we have a valid conversation to have with some developers, things like that.
So there is a significant amount of bike paths and trails going in Glen Loma. I'm assuming you're talking about Glen Loma.
I'm only talking about the San Antonio, because we have, we have a partial one, so.
Right.
You're talking about Glen Loma?
It is Glen Loma, and now it would be up to Glen Loma, probably, you know, it's a little.
So you're saying that there's a portion?
Well, when the San Antonio's, I mean, I know there's going to be more withdrawal in the interest of so far.
But you're still talking about Glen Loma's responsibility to build the bike paths along San Antonio.
And my understanding that's whose responsibility is not.
Is it along to Glen Loma front of you? Is that the portion of, is that the portion of San Antonio you're talking about?
It is, I, it is, it's San Antonio between Miller and Thomas, about half of that partial bike path is.
Remember the developer came here and spoke, gave the update, that's for, he's for Glen Loma.
So is he building that bike path?
Yeah.
So that's a city, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so they're building it, I'd like to ask them, if they start looking possibly sequencing it, so that happens, and I'll raise it, so it happens sooner.
I think that was a question that we never bothered asking him when he came.
No, I don't think so either. I've never thought about it, about the route, I'm actually, this, we're this close to connecting, if we have the people who are going to connect, if they're just started construction, let them build so many extra miles homes and say, okay, we're financing, because I mean, it's a cost, right? I get that, we should, so can we work with them, say, hey, at a certain point, can you then start? And again, I think it's, we live in a town, it's a settlement. Tell them, here's your bike path that takes you to your middle school, here's a bike path that takes you to your high school, here's a bike path that takes you to your elementary school. I mean, you know, people want to have, they'll have to drive their cars.
And, and for those that want to see what was, what was planned, you can look back in our old agendas from last year, maybe even the year before, at the end of it, I forget which year it was, but the developer came here and gave an update with, with the city planner and talked about what, what was going in there.
Gary, do you know that's all one developer, so you didn't build?
So Glen Loma is, is being done right now under one developer. So one, one developer owns and has the entitlements for the entire project. And what they're doing is they're, they're selling off chunks. And TriPoint or, there's various developers that are then building those developments.
Okay.
But it is under single ownership in terms of that entitlement and. Yeah, so you're, so you're talking about the fact that between Thomas and Miller, there is bike facilities that are, that are currently constructed. You're just looking at, okay, so now you've got nearly to, to Miller, taking it north from there, where, where are you going? Right? That's the question.
So I, I would, A, I like completion from Thomas to Miller, I assume that can happen.
So Thomas to Miller, you've got it, there's, again, looking at Google Earth, you've got it almost to the San Antonio, you know, roundabout, just fall short of that right now.
Exactly, so close, so close. The final mile, right?
Right.
And then from Valley Bunion down to Solar Sono.
Right, and so Valley Bunion would be the next down too, so I'm assuming there's something and I don't know, I'm looking into it, Miller to Valley Bunion, there's.
There's, there's nothing right now and I don't think a developer started.
Right, but the question that I would have, maybe that you're asking is, is it's supposed to, a bike, not a bike lane, but a bike path, is it a continuation along?
According to the, the drawings submitted, and I just saw my, I went back on to the previous, it shows a, bike path goes Thomas the whole way down to Solar Sono.
So then the question you have is, if I'm putting words in your mouth, when is the developer going to build that and can they advance that? It, okay.
Without taking a cost, you know, without taking a financial, right? At a certain point, but.
I'd ask, I know the answer's probably going to be as there's, as those properties develop and as those are sold off, because right now there, there's no intention of developing those until those are sold off.
And all, they're, they're, they're always going to keep building, they're still.
They do. They're continuing to sell them, but, and we're having a hard time actually right now getting a schedule from them. From week to week, from month to month, they kind of haphazardly go, okay, this goes there. We've tried to even get a roadway, a plan in terms of how they're going to, you know, lay out the roads and how they're going to actually phase the roadways. And, you know, I was here when this thing went forward, you know, if George, my senior development engineer, was here when this went forward, we both would have said, okay, I want a phasing plan. I want to make sure all the infrastructure's in, let's that, let the infrastructure define the park, develop all the parcels and let's go from there. We would have tried to require, it's Gilroy, I don't know if we would have been successful, but we would have tried to require then to come up with a phasing plan, but we're well past that at this point, so we're kind of at the will of the developer who has the ability here to move at his own pace and develop the roadway system and the network only to then service those parcels as he's developing them. That's kind of been his process and his, his progression as he's built from south to north or from what, southeast to northwest after his development. It doesn't harm to ask.
Can, can we please? Same.
I, I just, I want to use your hopes up.
Oh, no, no, I mean, but I think you're going to keep. I think that's a selling point, that's it. Then also, you have, you have, so who's in charge? The county just bought the section, the Class One Bike Path that the county put in when they put the roundabout in, which was really weird, it was way down. Do you know, I see that all got, all got mowed. Mowed, that wasn't city or county?
To promote the roadway clearance?
No, on the, actually on the division, on the Class One Bike Path, I put it by the county a year and a half ago, just a small section. I just ran it and I saw that it got mowed, which is nice because you have this 12 to 18 inches of aggregate base on the side, and it's, for me, it's much easier to run. I think a lot of people prefer, than the run-up mechanic, so it's nice when it's cut back. When it's not cut back, the weeds and the tumbleweed are all, and you have forces you want to.
I can speak to that, because I, I know the fire codes or whatever. So county does come through and do weed abatement for roadside clearance. And so they're working their way from Thomas and San Antonio, and they just haven't reached all the way to First and San Antonio yet.
Say it again, they've sort of, where they start, because they come up.
Thomas, Thomas and San Antonio, they're not going to do it in one day.
No, there's a 30-foot section that's not done. It's like a creek and I'm wondering if somehow, if there's a waterway there at all, they can't get near. Go ahead.
Okay. So I had the opportunity to speak at the Traffic Safe Communities Network for the county. This is put on by Supervisor Wasserman's district, and I was asked to speak about what Gilroy has done with micromobility to this day and our, our efforts as a commission and what we've done. And also, I got to talk to Supervisor Wasserman a little bit afterwards, and he gave kudos to this commission for, and stuff that we've done, and increasing bike and bed and walkability and all that, so I just wanted to pass that on to, to you guys. County Roads and Airport is also going to stripe, and you might remember this, citizens' request from Tierra Bella, that the missing bike lane from just north of Third Street Roundabout, it gets dropped off before you reach Highway 152. And County Roads and Airport should be out there soon to, they have enough room to be able to stretch that bike lane into the intersection, so it doesn't leave a bike rider just sort of wondering what to do before they get there. That is, that's their responsibility. And last and foremost, you know, this is something that's been worked on for a long time and that's actually getting a BMX, you know, style bike, pump track, dirt pump track, track, anything in the city of Gilroy, it's been super hard. It's been something that I've looked at even before I became a commissioner. So I'm happy to report that Garlic City BMX and the city of Gilroy have assigned MOU to basically construct and build, and they can go out and, and they can start getting funding. This organization comes from deep roots of, of bike riding and BMX riding here in Gilroy. Started on the, on Mary and Jim Garcia's property and a couple other people's property where they would build jumps for these kids to practice. And we still have kids that race BMX, mountain bike, pro mountain bikers. We have gold medal winners from X Games that live here and are raising their kids here. So this is, this is a deep-seated sport and, you know, I know some of the people would love to see like a national level track where they can race and, and have bleachers and lighting and all that stuff, and that was, that, that was going to happen back in 2008, right before the town turn. And unfortunately, it got, it got put aside and council members left, commissioners left, and it never came back up. So this is, you know, this is, I'll hopefully have some updates for you guys, probably not in June, maybe more towards August. But right now, I'm helping them and we're working through the specific items inside the MOU, like their emergency response plan and little things like that, get that stuff squared away. And then they, they've, they've got a good amount of funding that's sourced through here in the residents, but also Specialized Bicycle is going to be helping them out. I identified a grant for Peoples for Bikes that is giving money for bike parks like this, up to $10,000. So we'll, I'll help them out with that. And so that's one thing I might be coming back to you guys for is asking for a letter of recommendation, a letter of support. But yeah, that was, I was happy to see that last Monday. All right, so that's all I have. Next up would be staff reports, staff comments.
So a couple items on the agenda. You guys already got your photo. Glad you guys did that. So we'll get that updated on the website. E-scooter white paper update, that is something that we had our intern for last summer, his summer project stretched into the school year, we just had him finalize that this last week before he left to his new summer intern project or job of grad. So we've got that now. That is something we're hoping to potentially get to the council in the next couple of months. I know they're interested in, in e-scooters, I know this commission's interested in e-scooters. So we'll see what we can do with that. The other item is I have a very back in angle parking. We've got one intern now and we are hopefully going to have a second intern, we just had an interview with that second intern last week and hoping to have that person on board the next couple of weeks. That person is coming up or is, is very interested in traffic, very interested in new traffic trends. So this person's going to be perfect for this new type of concept and idea. So what we're probably going to do is give this person a project, so this summer, come up with a concept for back in angle parking, and I go very, we'll probably do a pop-up, we'll do advertising, we'll do layouts, we'll get some hay bales, we'll do a couple days worth of back in angle parking, we'll advertise it again, we'll do surveys out there, get people's thoughts on that and do a paper on what back in angle parking's all about and have him maybe present to the commission here, I think, this summer, so.
Yeah. Another one we've been working on.
That's, that's kind of the. So long as we can try and, we're nearing, nearing, that almost.
Well, I volunteer to, to help out whatever, whatever I can.
It'll be, it'll be very helpful to have you guys around for that, because I know that, you know, just doing a pop-up event like that is not a one-person gig, so having multiple people around to talk about back in angle parking, really tell about the benefits of, will be, will be very helpful, you know.
We can reach out to Hollister, right, and they did that down by, or at San Antonio High?
Yeah, in their high school. Yeah, they had one.
Get some feedback from them. They might say it's the worst idea ever, I don't know.
Yeah.
Have to hear what they say.
Yeah, I think they were, they did it, I believe, was it the end of last year? Beginning of the school year, I think, they had it.
Did they do a pop-up or is it?
No, actual, actual striped.
I did get to see it, I remember somebody mentioned it last time.
Yeah, I saw, it was in the paper. They had, wrote an article about it.
May, I don't think, they have a, talk, they're a city traffic engineer. We may reach out to them and see.
We'll have our intern reach out to Hollister. Or, or. They have good food down there. Lunch type. That's all of it.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing.
Yeah. Oh, yay!
Water access policy.
Score. Nice going. Thank you very much. It's all good. Thank you. Agenda items for next meeting? Anything that anybody has specifically?
I did, but I can't remember what it is, but we want to mention that we might not have for July.
Yeah, I, I don't, how did we do that for December? Did we actually agendize that or did we actually, did we agendize it? Okay.
How did we do it for last?
I don't remember if it was just a, a general consensus or we, I'd have to look it up.
I'm not sure, I just want to put it rising, you might skip, so if you have something, get on this agenda, the June agenda, so August we're going to.
I think that's just exactly how you did it, you said.
That what we did?
We're going to try and go dark. If there's anything that comes up, we can definitely have a meeting, but the intent is to not.
Not have a meeting.
Let's try and get everything in June, if stuff can wait until August, let's then.
If we can, we'll have a meeting, but otherwise.
Okay. So is everybody good at that?
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. All right. And I think the only thing that needed to get, just, just for our notes, was Patrick was going to talk about the subcommittee, Pedestrian Safety Subcommittee.
You're going to bring back commission.
Yeah, the information for the packet.
We've got the VTA coming in.[1730.34]